May 30th, can we have a roll call, please? It's nice to see everyone, by the way.
Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Moulton.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Here.
Mayor Burgel.
Here. And tonight, we're gonna just read the land acknowledgement. "The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jurojigi. Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism." And what that will do, if you'd like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. In this public meeting, we are going to have public comment. So, before we hear the report, so... Pursuant to the Brown Act, Section 54954, "The public shall be provided an opportunity to speak only on items that are listed on the special meeting agenda. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22, City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers." So, tonight, our topic is our budget study session, so please limit your comments to that topic. And, um, do we have any here, one here for public comment? I see you, Latonya. Go ahead and unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can't hear you, Latonya.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear?
Kind of.
I unmuted myself.
We can, just one moment, we're gonna try the volume. Okay, go ahead, Latonya.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Much better, thank you.
I just wanted to say that I put the comments that I have in the chat, that the chat feature. I just cut and paste, I'm sorry, copied and pasted my comments in the chat feature.
So, Latonya, would you be willing to send those in an email? Because we don't have chat activated for this meeting.
Yeah, I did send it in the email. I sent it to Pam Powell.
Great.
And I think I sent it to you as well.
Great, well, we look forward to reading that. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here for public comment this evening? Okay.
Seeing none.
Seeing none. We will bring it back to, um, our reports and action items and turn it over to Director Millar. For our budget study session.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Uh, the topic of tonight's presentation is the fiscal year 2324, uh, Budget Study Session. So, for tonight, uh, we're going to focus on expenditures by department and division. So, when I introduce the budget, uh, I essentially reported on the same numbers, but I reported on categories such as personnel, outside services. So, I didn't give you any departmental information. So, the point of tonight's meeting is to focus on the departments, and that's why we have a representative from every department in the audience. Uh, so at the very end, we can do a Q and A. Uh, so I'm gonna go over those major funds. That includes the water fund, the wastewater fund, building, and the harbor fund, uh, the internal service funds, and the general fund. Uh, there's a short section at the end where we'll talk about the ARPA monies, and then we'll have the Q and A. Uh, so, since the last meeting, uh, we did change the website a little bit. So, if you wanna look at the budget at home, uh, go to the city's webpage, uh, click on "My Government" at the top. Uh, you'll see a list like this. At the bottom of the list on the right, you'll see annual budget. And if you click that link, you should have access to all the budget documents. So, for the first section, expenditures by department and division, uh, we're gonna look at the major funds. And the first major fund is the water fund, or Fund 500. Uh, you'll see a lot of these schedules tonight. On the left, you'll see the departments. Uh, most departments have different divisions. That's in this column. Uh, these are the 2223 adopted budget numbers. So, we updated the budget at mid-year and amended some line items. But what we're gonna see tonight is what we started with last year, so that it's similar to what we're presenting for 2324. Uh, you'll see the dollar change, as well as the rate of change from one fiscal year to the other. At the bottom, you'll see that total. That total should match the total of the funds at the last meeting. And then, there are some categories that are not actually departments. Um, I reported on this last time. So, even though you see those incorporated into these schedules, uh, that's just so that the bottom line matches the last set of schedules. Uh, so to begin, we'll begin with finance. Uh, finance in the water fund is going up by 7%. Uh, that is more than the average. Uh, this is being driven by changes to positions within finance. Uh, so there were some changes during the fiscal year, but also proposed in this year's budget. Uh, the biggest change is adding a position, uh, a position that would be focused on utility billing. Uh, this position will be funded out of water and wastewater. Uh, so that's really what's driving the increase in the finance department. Uh, in engineering, engineering is a division of Public Works. Uh, this division saw a lot of changes during the fiscal year. Uh, ultimately, the division increased by two FTE. Uh, the positions within engineering are typically, um, allocated to multiple funds. As you can see, those additional positions within engineering mainly hit the water and wastewater fund with a little bit of the position being funded out of the general fund. So, that 32% really has to do with those increased, uh, positions, or FTEs. Uh, next, we have water distribution. Uh, it's actually going down by 4%. Uh, there were some large capital outlay purchases in the current fiscal year. Uh, so we're gonna reduce those line items next year. And then, supplies are actually up by 60,000, but because of the capital outlay dropping by 130,000, uh, the net effect is a decrease in their budget. Uh, here, we have water treatment. Uh, water treatment is seeing a $90,000 increase in personnel costs. Uh, professional technical or consulting charges are going up by 30,000, and then a $14,000 increase in electric, or electricity. Uh, next, we have the wastewater fund. Uh, the wastewater fund operates, uh, similar to the water fund in terms of how we, uh, allocate the costs of different positions. Uh, for finance and engineering, those rates of change are very similar to the water fund, and that really has to do with the fact that a lot of the engineering and finance positions are split between the two funds. Uh, when we're looking at sewer collection, uh, sewer collection is going down. Um, they added a large increase in their 2223 budget for tools and equipment. Uh, those were one-time purchases, so next year, you're seeing that line item go down. Uh, and wastewater treatments, uh, wastewater treatment, uh, is increasing their budget in many different categories. Uh, for example, repair parts are going up by 50,000, chemicals 26,000, lab testing 50,000, and electricity by 70,000. Next, we have the harbor fund. Uh, in the harbor fund, we have two departments, or I'm sorry, one department with two divisions. Uh, we have harbor maintenance. Harbor maintenance is going up by about 50,000. Uh, half of that are personnel expenses, and then about 14,000 in electricity, and then about 10,000 in general capital outlay. Uh, the Whorfinger position, or division, uh, is going up by about 26,000. Um, most of that are personnel increases, or cost of personnel. And then, we have about 10,000, uh, added for furniture and fixtures. Next, we have the building fund. Uh, the building fund has two divisions and two departments, uh, but the main operation is the building division within Development Services. Uh, their budget is dropping significantly. About 200,000 of that are two positions that we're not funding in 2324. And then, we saw an $80,000 decrease to their line item for plan checking services. Uh, the code enforcement, code enforcement division is going down by about 15,000. Uh, they only have a couple line items within the building fund, and, uh, we realized that they didn't need as much, uh, outside services monies. Uh, next, we have the internal service funds. So, the internal service funds, uh, what, the purpose of these funds is to allocate out the services provided by these funds. For example, equipment operations or the motor pool. Uh, this is where we have, uh, our staff repair and outfit different types of vehicles. We also have an IT fund and a general admin fund. So, before I get into these funds, the point of these funds is that these departments service other departments, and therefore, the costs of those operations actually get embedded into, uh, the departments within the general fund, water and wastewater. So, equipment operations, Fund 610, uh, just one division within Public Works. Uh, it's going up by quite a bit, over 12%. Uh, that has to do with increases in personnel. Uh, fuel is going up by about 150,000. Uh, we're increasing the consulting budget by about 35,000, and then, an additional 100,000 for vehicle purchases. Uh, the next internal service fund is the IT fund, Fund 630. So, this only has one division. Uh, it's going down, uh, even though personnel costs are going up. Uh, we did see a reduction to outside services, uh, such as, um, software maintenance or networking costs. Uh, the next fund, 650, this is where we, uh, keep the government and administrative departments. Uh, as you can see, there's a lot happening in this fund, uh, lots of departments and divisions. Uh, so I'll start at the top. So, uh, not to point out the mayor, um, so it is going up by a lot, but it is a small budget. Uh, this isn't, this has nothing to do with any changes to the mayor's office. Uh, this actually highlights the high cost of healthcare that the city pays. Uh, so last fiscal year, or this fiscal year, when we started the fiscal year, the mayor did not have health insurance. And now, starting in 2324, uh, they took advantage of our health insurance plans, and the cost of a family plan to the city is about $20,000. So, you can see, uh, how that can really affect, uh, small budget. In the City Council Division, uh, we also saw a higher-than-average increase. Um, that's because we have, we are now offering our car allowance and the opt-out incentive, um, to the council. Uh, that has resulted in a, uh, large percentage increase, but a fairly small dollar increase. In the City Manager's Office, you're seeing costs go up due to, or, uh, outside services, as well as a $5,000 increase to supplies. Uh, the City Clerk actually saw a decrease. This is mainly due to the cost allocation items. Uh, City Attorney, uh, for the fiscal year 2223 adopted budget, I overestimated personnel costs, so, um, that's the main driver here. Uh, in the HR departments, uh, we're seeing a 14% increase. Uh, this is due to personnel costs going up, uh, an increase to professional technical services for 41,000. Uh, public noticing for recruitments is going up by 20,000, and the outside legal budget is going up by 9,000. Uh, most of the cost to the professional technical has to do with, uh, Leadership Program the city started this fiscal year. Uh, we will continue that program next fiscal year, so that actually benefits all departments. Next, we have Economic Development. Uh, it's going up, uh, far more than average. Uh, that really has to do with some changes to the FTEs within that division. Uh, we added a part-time Economic Development Coordinator, and then, we upgraded to, uh, coordinator positions to program coordinator. Uh, there were also increases to temp salaries, as well as outside services. Uh, in this non-departmental division, uh, we're increasing our consulting budget by about 25,000. Uh, this is because typically, we get a few unforeseen expenses during the year, and this is a good place to put a lot of those, um, costs. And finally, we have a fund dedicated to our facilities operation, Fund 660. Uh, it holds one division. It's going up by about 8% due to personnel costs, electricity, as well as the cost allocation line items. Finally, we have the general fund. So, the general fund is the city's main operating fund. Uh, here, we can see all of the different departments. Because many of these departments have multiple divisions, it doesn't all fit on one slide. So, you'll see the department and then a slide with the division within that department, or divisions within that department. So, the City Manager has a department or division. Uh, that division is CAPE, the Community Access Program for Eureka. Uh, CAPE is seeing their budget go up by about 18%. Uh, that's mainly due to increases in FTEs. Uh, we added two new positions. Uh, these are unique positions because they're funded by outside monies, uh, so they're not permanent positions. Um, they're dependent on the grant funding. Um, also, even though their budget is going up by about 174,000, uh, much of that is being reimbursed to us through, uh, various grants. Uh, we're likely to receive about 350,000 in, uh, grant reimbursements next fiscal year. Uh, next, we have Humboldt Bay Fire. Uh, just one division. Uh, if you would like to see more information about Humboldt Bay Fire's budget, um, they are taking their budget to their board, uh, during the month of June. Uh, the city, uh, splits their budget with the Humboldt Bay Fire District. Uh, the city pays about 65% of their total budget. Next, we have police. Uh, the Police Department, or EPD, saw some changes during the fiscal year. Uh, they actually saw the number of FTEs go down by one position, uh, but they did upgrade, upgrade many of these positions. Uh, they have two divisions. Um, those FTE changes affected the Enforcement Division. Uh, their increase is mainly due to personnel costs. And then, the Dispatch or the Communications Division is, uh, down slightly. Next, we have Public Works. Public Works, again, uh, they saw changes to their position list during fiscal year 2223. Uh, all of these positions are within the Engineering Department, and even though the FTEs went up, um, most of the costs went to the Water and Wastewater Fund, so you see little effect in the general fund due to those changes. Uh, when we look at the different divisions within Public Works, uh, you can see that code enforcement went up by about 10%. Uh, this is mainly, um, due to personnel increases, outside services, and cost allocation increases. Uh, the Admin Division went down. Uh, that's because their cost allocation accounts went down, because those, um, sometimes the cost allocation will go down when other departments or other divisions see increases in FTEs. Uh, they just, they take in a smaller share of those internal service funds. And then, in the Traffic Division, we saw increases in salaries and benefits, as well as capital outlay. Next, we have Development Services. So, Development Services saw some changes during the fiscal year, and they're proposing some changes in 2324. Ultimately, this will not increase the number of positions, it's just upgrading positions. Uh, their budget is relatively flat. Uh, it's up about 1%. So, Development Services is split into two different divisions. One is planning, or also known as Development Services, and the other division is building, and building lives in Fund 540. Next, we have Community Services. So, Community Services saw an increase in their FTEs during the current fiscal year, and they're proposing increases next fiscal year for a total of about 4.4 FTEs. So, many of their divisions are relatively flat, or growing less than average, but there are increases in the Parks Department. Uh, this is mainly due to, uh, personnel increases, plus adding a maintenance worker. And then, in Youth Recreation, uh, it went down, and that's mainly because temp salaries was reduced by about $200,000. Uh, we no longer service the school district for an after-school program. Um, they did see increases to their total position list, and that was due to the preschool positions. And then, in the Zoo, uh, we added some zookeepers during the fiscal year, and then, we added some new line items, uh, for about $300,000. That includes what we pay our marketing, um, firm for marketing the Canopy Walk, as well as the amount we pay to the Zoo Foundation. Uh, and finally, we have non-departmental. Uh, it's going up by about 14%, and that's coming from an increase in electricity, as well as, um, $90,000 to fund the police auditor. So, that concludes the first section of tonight's presentation. So, we'll have an opportunity to ask questions, uh, following this section.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Director Millar? Uh, Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Director Millar, for, uh, for your presentation. Always clear. Um, although, I do have a couple questions, just to clarify. Um, at wastewater, you said the electricity costs are going up by 40%?
Uh, 70, $71,000.
Um, well, I guess, why?
Um, I think that reflects the rate increases we saw through PG&E this fiscal year.
And how does the implementation of solar affect that? Where are we on that timeline? Maybe that's a Public Works question?
I could've handled that, but Director Girving's too quick.
Well, for, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, for the wastewater plant, we don't have any PV projects planned. Uh, when we evaluated facilities with RCA, that was not one that was at the top of the list. Uh, the, currently, the PV project that's farthest along is the one at the water treatment plant. That's the one where the, I think, the most recent meeting, or the one before, we rejected all bids and went back to the drawing board to retool that project. But, uh, for various reasons, the wastewater plant itself is not a candidate for solar just yet. That doesn't mean it couldn't be down the road.
Right, I remember that now, thank you. Um, but they do use, uh, don't they do some gas recapture there? Is there any potential for that, um, technology to improve?
We generate about 50% of the electricity that we need for the plant from the cogeneration engine. It's powered by gas from the digesters. Uh, there's just not enough, that we use all the gas we produce and we, uh, kind, you know, it's the best we can do, is 50%, but with costs going up and just the, the amount of electricity that the plant uses, that's what contributes to the increase that Director Millar mentioned.
Well, making half the power we use is actually really impressive, and that's, um, good to know, thank you. Um, I guess the, my, the other increase in 110, the increase in electricity, that's just also rates going up in the general fund. Thank you, Director Girving. Um, in the Building Fund, was it, is that 540?
Yep.
Uh, I... There was a decrease in, um, is it staff? And I whizzed past it, and I missed the detail on that one. I wanted to stop you there, just to catch that, is that less staff in the Building Fund? Or what was the decrease in that one for?
So, about 200,000 of that $284,000 decrease, that's where, we're not eliminating positions, but we're not funding them, because we don't anticipate filling those positions next fiscal year.
Why not?
Uh, I think due to, well, I'll let the City Manager.
So, we've realized a lot of efficiencies in the Building Division, um, over the past year and a half or so. Um, the hiring of our new Chief Building Official has made drastic changes to that, um, division. Um, there was a lot of changes that were made by him in order to increase efficiencies. Um, we did have a Plans Examiner position that was in there. Um, he's taken on that role, and that's why, um, not only did we not need that position, but we also reduced the amount of money for outside services, 'cause he does a lot of the plan review. We still retain a consultant, but we don't utilize it anywhere near what we used to. So, due to his qualifications, it's really helped with that. And then, we had another position that was more for administrative purposes, and about a year and a half ago, we did some reorganization in there, and, um, turned out to be really well. So, over the past year, we've kept that position and those positions in place, just in case if we were to see an uptick or a need for those. And according to the Chief Building Official, we, we do not right now. Um, so, it's...
Okay, so we've been holding that, that spot in the budget, but not using it, and now, we're like, sure, we're not gonna use it.
Yep.
Wonderful. Um, and then, in code enforcement, is that a similar story? Why, why the decrease in code enforcement?
Uh, that's just within the Building Fund. So, historically, we, uh, funded code enforcement completely out of the Building Fund, but that led to, uh, uh, a negative fund balance in the Building Fund, 'cause it wasn't, it was paying for the Building Division, but it wasn't paying enough to fund code enforcement. So, after Measure H, those costs got transferred over to the General Fund to ensure that the Building Fund was able to have a balanced budget.
I see.
And we left a few line items within the Building Fund.
Wonderful, that's all my questions for now, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. Um, thank you for the report. Let's see, uh, the first question is a little specific to harbor maintenance, and, and I've, you know, emailed folks, you know, folks from the, who are residing at, um, the Public Marina have, you know, reached out to me in the past year, just about, you know, requesting improvements to the facilities there, and I just wanted to make sure that those were included in the, the budget.
So, yes, we've, we've already started on that. Um, we have made some changes to the flooring. Um, it opened up a can of worms, and we're spending some more money on that, but yes, that, um, will typically come from our facilities. Um, we're still trying to balance that budget. Um, a lot of the issues we have with the harbor fund is that, um, there's a lot of longstanding leases that we've had that weren't at market rate for a very long time, and some of them are coming up, and I think that that's an area where we can improve on, and in order to get better market rate for some of the properties that we do have. Um, but I can assure you that every dime that we get out of the harbor fund goes back into the harbor, it's just, it doesn't generate the amount of money that's necessary. So, we're still subsidizing it to the 100,000 range, something.
Give or take. I forget.
But we are utilizing some non-streets infrastructure monies to make some of the improvements to the tenant facility as well as to the Warfenger Building itself. And then we should be hopefully putting out a bid for painting sometime soon.
Great. Thank you. And then I was just kind of curious with the leadership program. How many people participate at any given time with the?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy to answer that question. So this was, what we're talking about when we say the leadership program, we're referring to what is called the Bay Cities Leadership Academy. And we had our inaugural tryout of that, I guess you'd say. And that is in partnership with the City of Arcata. There were 34 participants in the program, evenly split between the two cities. The expense for this program was also split between the two cities. So what that looked like was 10 sessions over the course of about seven months, where we contracted with local, a couple of local folks who I'm sure you're all aware of, Roger and Mary, with, it's Galinas, James, and Cascadia. So they had done Cascadia, so they tailored that to our specific needs. We stretched it out a little longer. And so that's generally what the program looked like as a snapshot. It was, I will add, very well received by all participants in the program. And that's why we're actually, this was not something that we had budgeted for last year. That's part of where this increase in the HR department is coming from because it is something that we intend to continue doing and modifying, and actually creating a budget to sustain that effort.
That's great. And then is it, do basically kind of each department choose, you know, a couple of people to participate? Is that, so there's kind of?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Super. Thank you. And then I was kind of, thank you. I was curious about the case manager positions and our mental health workers and outreach. I was just kind of curious, you know, I think especially looking at with police, the number of full-time equivalents being reduced by one, if there's been some sort of offset in just sense of support with having those other positions in place.
No, the reorganization as a part of EPD's plan was mainly for upper-level positions. We took two, I don't want to get this wrong, two captains and made them commanders, and then we created an assistant chief position. And as a part of that, we went from nine sergeants to eight sergeants as a part of that. So that was a part of the reorg. As far as the mental health clinicians and the, and the mental health, managing mental health clinician, those are grant-funded. We are working on a potential contract with the county to become a provider, and that would be coming back to council. We've been researching it with their staff over the last few months, and we're hoping to significantly expand that program with the support of the county. But that is still in its early stages.
Thank you. I think those are all my questions for now. Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Director Millar, on the, in the harbor fund, is there, is there no money for dredging? Are we, is that like a bi-annual thing or?
So it's been fly-by-the-seat-of-your-pants. There's been decades of subsidies to the harbor fund forever, and Director Millar has done an extremely great job in trying to get that to come close to breaking even. So no, we do not have any designated source for that. Right now, what we do have is we have a property that's, you know, owned basically by the harbor, and it's the property down at Samoa Boat Launch. Currently, that property is being leased in a lease-to-purchase agreement. That was, I think it was 2020, 2019, I believe. But anyway, they're paying a monthly amount, about $9,000 for that. Once their first portion of that development is finalized, that property will be purchased, and that would be intended for dredging. We also are looking at a grant. We have a requirement at the Commercial Street Dock where the fueling facility is. It's the only commercial fueling facility on the bay, where those underground storage tanks need to be brought out from underground and put above ground. And we recently received a grant from Port Infrastructure Development Program with the Maritime Administration to replace the pilings at Fisherman's Terminal. When they were out here visiting, we proposed that project to them. One of the things that we want to do with that is add dredging to that. What we'd want to do is be able to increase the depth of the Commercial Street Dock so we could accommodate larger vessels and also increase the amount of volume because those are big points for this grant program. So in doing that and increasing the depth, we would be asking for grant funding for that dredging. And a lot of the costs associated with dredging here locally is for mobilization and demobilization because we don't have the dump scows and we don't have the other equipment necessary. So that would go a long way if we were successful in that grant to really help subsidize the dredging of our other facilities.
Okay. So I did point out that projects line item or category. So I think back in fiscal years 16, 17, I worked with Director, or City Manager Slattery, when he was Director of Community Services, and we tried to reorganize the budget to accommodate the dredging. So we do have placeholders, but typically at the end of the fiscal year, even if we don't, if we haven't spent those monies, we're still not breaking even. So, but we're getting better. We're much better off than we were five years ago.
And I assume at some point in the presentation, you're going to have a breakdown percentage for each department over the total budget. Are we going to do that?
That's something in the budget document, but I could.
That's fine. I'll just look. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing no one, we'll open it up for more reporting, right? Or do we need to do public comment in between each one? We did it earlier. We don't need to do public comment again. Thank you, Assistant City Manager Powell.
All right, so the next section is about the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. So the city received about $6.4 million in monies from the federal government during the pandemic. That column on the left or with the budgets is what we thought we would use the money or how we would use the money. We learned a little bit more about the uses of those monies. So we've actually come up with an amended budget. As you can see, the biggest reallocation comes from this project. This is something, I believe, that's happening regionally, so it wouldn't just be a city project. But it wasn't an eligible use of ARPA monies anyways. The community-based funding, these were grants that were available for businesses and nonprofits. We have no longer rece, or we're not receiving any more applications. And we also encumbered about $65,000 in additional monies for a nonprofit. So we're attempting to reallocate that section. Street reconstruction, we have other monies available for this category. And then we are, I'm sorry, there's three new requests. That water projects line would be a new request. And then we're requesting half a million dollars for a housing trust fund. What's limiting us right now from establishing a trust fund is the seed monies. You need half a million dollars to start the trust fund, and ARPA monies are available for that purpose. And then we would like to create an EOC or an emergency operations center plan for the city and as well as for local business. So we would like to use the monies for that purpose as well. But that is, what we're proposing is that in that amended budget column. Any questions?
Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Yeah, I have a question about the housing trust fund. I remember, I think that you had talked about this a few months ago, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that it was like, we need so much to seed it, and then it was going to be, I think, in part, contributions would be coming from the money gleaned from like Airbnb rentals and other things like that? Am I remembering? Okay. Okay. So this, so this would basically seed the fund because we have to have that in there to begin with. Where does the fund have to get to before it can start being accessed? Like, is there a number for that?
So the requirements are that you, you start with half a million dollars, and then you have to have a dedicated funding source, I believe, of $100,000 per year. It might be more, but we feel that the TOT from the vacation rentals will be enough to have a continuing funding source of $100,000. So once you have the seed monies and you've identified the reoccurring funding source, then you can, you can establish the trust fund. And then after you establish the trust fund, then you go out and you request monies from the state to fund different programs within that trust fund.
So if I, and it's been months, so I don't know if I remember exactly, but I think the TOT or something was somewhere around, you guys thought it would be somewhere around like $130,000 or $134,000 a year, something like that, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so, so how long, I, I'm sorry if you just answered this, my brain was flying someplace else. So how long does it need to be at, I guess I'm wondering how long before we could roll this out?
Oh, assuming that that's approved to be, or ARPA monies are approved for that purpose, we could have that rolled out, I think, by the end of '23.
So we just have to demonstrate that we're going to have that. We don't have to have a period of time where we've demonstrated that we've had $100,000 plus coming in. We just have to say, here's our source that we plan to use.
They will expect the general fund to commit at least $100,000 per year. So if that VDU, the monies, TOT monies from the VDU doesn't hit $100,000, we're going to have to supplement that with other local funds.
Okay, here's my last question then about that. So I know we're declining quarter over quarter, and I'm just curious if you guys have already been able to see any differences. And I haven't dug into all of this, so forgive me if it's in there. If we're starting to see an impact in the TOT based off of those declines that are happening? I'm talking about economic downturn. Are we starting to see an impact in that fund?
Yeah, we've been seeing a downturn in sales tax for a few quarters now.
Right.
And I don't know if that's a national or a, that has to do with the larger economy or something that's happening locally. I think TOT is actually a little more resilient than our sales tax dollars. I mean, that's the impression I have based on looking at the history of TOT. Typically, it doesn't, it's not as volatile as our sales tax revenues are.
Right, because sale tax revenues would be everybody, including travelers, and TOT is more kind of travelers who, okay.
We also see a lot of TOT coming from, like, when there's a large fire in the area, the hotels get filled up. So there's, there's actually business reasons why the T, or we see TOT revenues versus just general, like, tourism, I guess.
Is the TOT, is it measured quarterly or is it yearly?
Yes, quarterly, yeah.
So if you guys start to see a decline, you'll know if you start seeing it get impacted.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And it's, it has gone, I mean, we saw a peak. The pandemic was interesting because we saw our revenue, we expected revenues to drop significantly, and yet almost everything went up aside from our own, or programs from REC, so, yeah.
Anyone else? Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. Of course, I'm sure, it's clear that I'm really excited about the housing trust fund and also the EOC plan for city and businesses too. So, you know, definitely supportive of those in terms of new requests. I'm curious, and it may be a little early in the game because the regional housing trust fund is also just getting going, but if there's kind of thoughts of, you know, one, you know, making sure that we are funding the City of Yerika one, but how it might interface with the regional one or might, or have you seen if there's any opportunities for kind of, I don't know, like collaboration or mutual benefit by partnering with, you know, having both kind of a city-designated one and a regional one?
I mean, I don't see why there wouldn't be any reason that trust funds couldn't work together on a project. So the benefit of having our own is essentially control of those, of that funding. But we are interested in at least communicating with the county about what they plan to do with it because I think if there is overlap, it can be with both the monies but also what programs you're running out of those trust funds.
Thank you. Go ahead. Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
I had one more question about those, or maybe a couple more questions about it. I am trying to recall, and I know we talked about it before, what the amount in that housing trust fund, what the parameters were going to be on that for like how much and like what the standard was with that.
I, I think you may be referring to the ADU financing program. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
So this is completely separate of that?
Uh oh, okay, help me.
So the ADU financing program was, we got PLHA funding, correct?
Correct.
So we had PLHA, which is, don't kill me, Katie, it's, what is PLHA, Kristen? Has something to do with housing. But anyway, we got a grant from them, and that was earmarked, and that was a non-competitive grant that we get annually. And we had, I believe, $250,000 that we used of that to put aside as a revolving loan program. And the only thing that's prohibiting us from rolling that out right now is a partnership with a bank to fund it once it gets built. And we're well along in that process. We talked to a local bank, and it looks like we're going to be there soon. So this is something separate. So this could go into actual building, you know, housing. It could go into purchasing property. It could go into programs related to housing similar to an ADU financing program. But there's a lot of different options that could be used for that. Obviously, we'd come back to council once we had this established and had the balance and, I don't know, maybe start an application process. I have no idea. But this, this can do something similar, but that ADU financing is, comes from grant funding that we have.
It's permanent local housing allocation.
Thank you.
I should have asked you.
I Googled quick. Councilmember Bauer?
Just a question about ARPA in general. How long do these funds last? Are we, what, a couple of years?
Twenty-five, twenty-six. Yeah, I'm not nervous about using it yet, but we still have a lot, or we've only used 230,000 of 6.4 million, so we have some catching up to do.
And I think it was five years from the date that it was distributed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Carry on.
Okay, so I'm not done with my budget presentations, maybe just for tonight. But next time, I want to look at fund balance or our reserves and potential uses of those reserves. We're going to do a CalPERS outlook. Not good news, but also we'll be okay. And then Measure H, I'm going to go over how much revenue Measure H has contributed to the general fund as well as what we've used Measure H, or what type of uses we've used Measure H for. So, yeah, there's more budget to come. And then, thank you. And if you have any questions for the departments or for myself, you can ask them right now. You can send us emails. There's still more opportunity for you to look into the budget.
Great. Any further questions? And that concludes your report. So thanks, everybody, for being here. So thanks, everybody, for being here. We're adjourned.